Good evening, welcome to the February the 2nd study session. This evening we have four items on a study session and one for a special meeting. I would ask that anybody with phones make sure that they're in a silence mode. And regarding item number one, normally during study session, as a rule, we don't take input from the audience. This evening we will. You can step up to the podium when the time becomes available. And please, if possible, keep your comments to somewhere around three, three and a half minutes. I don't want to get into repetitious, you know, one person and the next person gets that and says the same thing. So with that, number one.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, I'll just recap briefly. At the December 22nd City Commission's study session, the Commission decided by consensus to place on the agenda the issue of changing the legal age of purchasing and possessing tobacco products in the City of Leavenworth from 18 to 21 years of age. Currently, the city regulates that through adopting the state statute. When we adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code, which sets that age at 18. Any change to this in the City of Leavenworth will require us creating an ordinance, which we can do no problem, and if we decide to do that, then we can look at other things, such as vapor products or alternative nicotine products. But that's getting into the details later on. Before you tonight, it's just the issue. I would assume it's the first of a couple of study sessions if we decide to go that way. Nothing will be decided tonight, but just to discuss the item. So what I have, letters I've included in the packet, and that's all that staff has on this. The police chief is here. If you have any questions about enforcement, he'll be here to answer those for you.
Okay, Mark?
Okay.
We'll open the floor to the general comments.
Hi, good evening. Jeremy Karinmeyer. So today I was driving around town with a, out of town, or with a developer from Kansas City, and we drove north Leavenworth, down Fourth Street, through downtown, back to Esplanade. And the person I was with made the comment about, said, "Wow, you guys really have a lot going on here." And I was thinking about it, and this person's right, and I made a list. We have two new hotels, another one being planned, restaurant relocations and expansion, the stove factory lofts, bender lofts, relocation to the port of entry, community center improvements, the one cent sales tax, the support of the county sales tax. And the City of Leavenworth has been involved either directly or indirectly with all these projects, and none of these projects would have been, happened without leadership vision and someone saying that we can do better. And what does all this have to do with what we're talking about tonight? Well, let's go back to November 19th, 2015. Headline, Kansas City Star, says KC Windock County Raised Legal Age For Tobacco Products To 21. I looked at it and I thought, man, wow, that's quite the statement. And since then, just in the last two months of 2015, you have Kansas City, Missouri, population 470,000 people, Kansas City, Kansas, population 148,000 people, and Independence, Missouri, with a population of 117,000 people, have all enacted Tobacco 21 legislation. Right now, roughly one-third of the metro falls under the Tobacco 21 regulations. Even tonight, you have the City of Leighton, Kansas, population 133,000 voting on this tonight. And next week, the City of Gladstone, roughly a few thousand people less than Leavenworth are voting on this. And all, to me, all of these cities are cities where the leadership and the citizens have said, "We can do better." But this isn't just a local trend, this is a national trend as well. You have New York City, legislation, New York City passed this legislation in 2014. Los Angeles has legislation pending. Chicago has been proposed by their mayor. Santa Clara County, which includes San Jose and the Bay Area, 1.9 million people, passed this legislation. City of Boston, the entire state of Hawaii, City of Cleveland, State of New Jersey has legislation pending, and hundreds of other cities and counties around the United States. So what I think the City of Leavenworth has is an opportunity to support public health, support the initiative of our employers, be on the leading edge of this policy change, and do so all at a small cost. In fact, there's a tidal wave of this change happening across the country. To me, it's not an if, but when this policy happens in Leavenworth. The question is, which side of history do we want to be on? And I'm here strictly as a citizen who thinks that we, as a city, can enact this sort of legislation and do better. I know that there's a number of people here who can speak on policy and the health implications. And with that, I'll take a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us here. My name's Erin Kickbusch, and I'm the Senior Community Health Director for the American Heart Association. So I'm sure you can imagine why this is an important topic for the American Heart Association. It's no secret that smoking and tobacco products certainly affect the cardiovascular health of young people, and all Americans for that matter. I'm not going to spend time going into the health implications of smoking. You all know what those are. But for us, we see concerning numbers. According to the Surgeon General, 90% of smokers picked up their first cigarette before their 18th birthday. That's a concerning number, and that's what our focus is with Tobacco 21. The importance for us is to break that social chain, get the tobacco products out of the young people under the age of 18, so that they don't continue that, you know, lifelong addiction. So that's it for me. But we really are encouraging you all tonight to join the many growing communities that are supporting Tobacco 21 and passing these types of ordinances. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Connie Corr, I've been a resident of Leavenworth for 20 years, and I've been working in healthcare for 45 years, most of that time with patients with heart and lung problems. So I've seen the effects of smoking on public health. Not, as Erin said, we're not going to spend time on that tonight. You've all seen the ads, you've heard the literature. What we want to do is look at this particular issue, smoking cessation. And I say smoking, but I really want to address all nicotine use, because we've got so many different delivery systems available to our young people now. We have cigarettes, little cigars with flavors. We have hookah, e-cigarettes, and especially spit tobacco. What we want to do is break that chain, as Erin said. The thing I like about this legislation is that it looks at that continuum of smoking. We know how difficult it is to quit smoking. Nicotine is very addictive. I've worked with people in smoking cessation programs who've been addicted to narcotics, to alcohol and cigarettes, and cigarettes, to most of them, was the hardest thing to quit. What we need to do now is look at the beginning of that continuum, the introductory level. How can we deter those 15 to 18-year-olds from smoking? We know they can't go out and purchase it, but what is our supply source? Their supply source is the 18 to 21-year-olds, their peers, people that they see at social events, who they hang out with after football games, who work with them, who make cigarettes available to them. And we want to, first of all, for that age group, that 18 to 21-year-old, intervene for them before they're into that 20- to 30-year cycle of addiction. Then for that 15 to 18-year-old group, if we can break that introductory cycle, reduce the availability of cigarettes, we can make a difference. Now, it takes time to build those statistics, but I think you've gotten in your packets information on one of the early projects that was done in 2005 in Needham, Massachusetts. After 10 years of following their population, their teenagers had reduced smoking by 46%. Over half of the number of teenagers who had been smoking in 2005 had stopped smoking by 2010. So we know that this initiative works. The two things that I think are important for us to consider are, first of all, the health of our young people. We want to be able to say that Leavenworth supports healthy initiatives for our youth. The other one is, as was pointed out initially, Leavenworth is a very progressive city. This is our chance to be in the forefront of a movement across the state of Kansas saying, "We value the health of our youth, we value the social values of this type of program." We're, and Leavenworth is very proud of our history, and now we want to be able to say, "We're proud of how we affect the future." Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Danielle Jones, and I am a fellow assigned to Fort Leavenworth as the Health Promotion Officer. One of my responsibilities as Health Promotion Officer for Fort Leavenworth is to facilitate and coordinate what is called the Community Health Promotion Council. One of the duties of this council is to, on an annual basis, we evaluate the needs and the risks to our population and establish a health promotion plan in one of the five areas, which include behavioral health, physical health, environmental, social, and spiritual health. One of the priorities we have established for fiscal year '16 is tobacco-free living. Some of the initiatives we have already began to either discuss or implement with regards to our council is, one, last year, we expanded our policy to include the use of electronic cigarettes as a restricted, as restricted in the federal regulation, which does not require the use of cigarettes or tobacco products within 50 feet of federal buildings. Secondly, currently, we are considering establishing tobacco-free medical campuses for all of our healthcare facilities. Lastly, we're also considering establishing smoke-free educational environments to include the CGSC, which is going to eventually evolve into Army University. So I just want to share with you that the Tobacco 21 policy is a policy that is consistent with what the Army is trying to do as we try to shift our culture away from being tobacco-permissive. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Danielle. Yes.
Thank you, members of the Commission. My name is Scott Hall, and I am the Vice President for Strategic Initiatives at the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Chamber, but really on behalf of its more than 2,000 members, and on behalf of the 158 and growing organizations that have endorsed Tobacco 21 for Greater Kansas City. Tobacco 21 has been inspired by a project that we have co-led at the Chamber called Healthy KC, which is an aspirational program to try and make Kansas City, Greater Kansas City, a destination for health and wellness. We know we are not as healthy as we would like to be, and we know that in the 21st century, economic vitality of our region is going to be predicated on the health of the people that live in it. 24.1% of Kansas high school students are current tobacco users. That means they have used tobacco within the last 30 days. The national average is 22.4. Primary source for tobacco among those young people is their 18- to 20-year-old peers. And we know, the science is now demonstrating to us, that the brains of those ages 15 to, really, 20, are still developing. And particularly those parts of the brain that are susceptible to nicotine addiction are developing and make it much more likely that if you start young, you will be a committed and lifelong smoker. What's more, e-cigarette use among this age demographic has tripled, more than tripled, in the last three to four years. Proposal that we bring before you tonight and want to discuss with you going forward, Tobacco 21 is not a silver bullet that will cure all problems related to teen tobacco use, but we think it can make a significant dent in that use. A March 2015 Institute of Medicine study estimated that Tobacco 21 in any community would reduce smoking among 15- to 17-year-olds by 25%, and among 18- to 20-year-olds by 15%. When you talk to experts who are, study the fields of tobacco cessation, those are meaningful, huge, I would say, statistics. I also, though, recognize that there is business impact. We are the Chamber of Commerce, we represent many businesses. A recent study from the Ohio State University estimated that the average smoker costs to a private employer every year $5,816. That is an additional health insurance cost, but also an additional absenteeism and presenteeism. The flip side of this issue is, though, of course, that fewer businesses will be able to sell tobacco products to 18- to 20-year-olds. However, the American Journal of Public Health, excuse me, in an article that was published last year, estimated that only a 2% decrease in annual tobacco sales would befall those who sell tobacco products as a result of Tobacco 21. 75% of U.S. adults, including 70% of smokers, support Tobacco 21 in a poll that was done in the summer of 2014. And as such, there are 121 cities across our country that are Tobacco 21 communities. And as we said earlier, we hope that will be 122 in about an hour and a half. And, what's, I'm sorry?
It won't happen tonight.
True, you're right. They won't technically be a Tobacco 21 community for 10 days, but we're hopeful that they will be soon. I want to offer the Chamber's resources and the resources of this group and the 158 organizations that stand with us as you all explored this opportunity. We have learned a few lessons in Independence, Kansas City, Missouri, Kansas City, Kansas, and now Leighton. We've got some tips. One of them I would suggest to you is, in the study session item, it talks about the purchase and possession of tobacco. These are two separate things, and they are not necessarily both things that have to change. Purchase is separate from possession. In fact, Kansas City, Missouri, and Kansas City, Kansas, and Independence, and most of the cities across the country that have passed Tobacco 21 have not changed their possession laws. They've not criminalized the possession or use of tobacco products among those that are 18, 19, and 20-year-olds. And we don't suggest necessarily that you do the same. There are lots of details, lots of nuance, that we'd be happy to share with you. I know I've gone over my three minutes, so with that, I'm happy to stick around and answer any questions if there are any for the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any. Open the discussion up to the Commission. Who wants to start?
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Rainey. I know that he went on to the book for Connecticut. He had some wrong facts. He said that I proposed it, and obviously, the Commission is the one that proposed it. And I think on social media has taken some stance, and he's in agreement that we should not change it, but I'd like to hear what he has to say on this subject.
Okay. Sure, I've got several points on, that I've been tossing around and looking at since we brought this up. First, let me start off with the health issue. I appreciate everything that you guys have said about the health issue on smoking. I think we all were in accord that it is a bad habit to get into. I'm not an advocate for smoking whatsoever. I've got kids myself, and I've taught them to stay away from it. It's unhealthy, it's expensive. However, I've always also been an advocate that the best way to keep these products out of the hands of the younger people is through education, through radio, TV ads, through schooling, teachers, through parents, newspaper, what have you. I'm not sure if I really agree with changing the law on this. I did put questionnaire on social media to get some feedback from our citizens, and I'll have to say, going over those things, I probably ended up getting about a 90 to 10, and 90% were against this, you know, changing this rule. One of the problems I have with this myself is, I never came into office to try to tell another adult what they can and cannot do with illegal product. I did not come into office to wield that type of sword of power, if you will. They are considered 18, they're considered adults, they can enter military, as you know. They can enter contracts through cars, they can enter bank loans, they go and get jobs, they pay taxes. I, in my opinion, I just don't see where people can tell one adult they're an adult when it comes to criminal aspects in contracts, but they're not an adult when it comes to making their own personal decisions on their own life. There's also an economic impact, as you had mentioned earlier. I'm not sure if anybody contacted some of the stores here in town, but I went to approximately 13 to 14 convenience stores in town. I visited personally, I spoke with owners, and I spoke with managers. I've got only one store, only one manager, said that this would not make a very big impact on their financial sales of smoking tobacco or products. Everyone else has spoke to use terms as it would hurt them significantly, huge impact, big impact. One store even mentioned the fact that when Kansas raised the sales tax on cigarettes, that since they're close to the Missouri side, that he lost 30% of his tobacco business on the Missouri. With this, they're claiming they're going to lose another 15 to 20%. Another store said that because of the Kansas tax, they decreased 20% in their sales. And another store also echoed approximately 30% in their sales. So honestly, when it's all said and done, I, I'm an advocate against smoking. I think we could do a better job at educating people to not get into this and not smoke, but I am not an advocate for telling another adult what they can and cannot buy when they're talking about illegal product. So in my opinion, I'm not for this.
Well, Mr. Rainey started talking about taxes, which has nothing to do with this, and that's what the state did, they changed taxes. If I was a smoker, I'd definitely go across the river if I lived in Leavenworth to buy my cigarettes, if I can get them for a buck a pack cheaper, whatever the difference is. But obviously, that's not the discussion at hand. I, I agree with the people who presented that the impact on the business, if someone says they're going to lose 30% of their business, I can't believe that 30% of their business is because of cigarette sales from 18- to 21-year-old kids. I would like to see a CPA say that rather than a clerk at a, at a store or a manager say, "That's impossible, that 30% of any of the convenience store business is cigarettes or tobacco products 18 and 21," that they would, and they would lose that. I don't know, anybody sells that. Maybe Doris's Smoke Shop is that, but the rest of them, I can't see 30% of the business being that niche. I, there's other things that, you know, I don't consider this a constitutional right. I consider it a health issue. I, I see it a wave that's going to be taking over. It's going to happen, whether it happens in Leavenworth or not, but it is going to happen across the country within five years. I just suspect this can be very commonplace everywhere in the country. We have, Commissioner Rainey talks about a contract, when you're 18, you can enter into one, and I agree with all of that. In the state, an 18-year-old can't go to the casino run by the state. You know, why can't they do that? They can enter into a contract, they're not allowed in the Kansas casino. I'm sure many of us here are in favor of the Second Amendment and concealed carry and open carry laws. State of Kansas, if you're under 21, you cannot concealed carry.
Can't drink.
By law. So, and, and I consider that a constitutional right. That's Second Amendment. Nowhere in the Constitution does it say you have to be of age. So this is not a constitutional issue. This is, I don't believe it's a, a business issue that we're going to lose tons and tons of business. I do suspect that there'll be kids 18 and 21, if they can't go to KCs or some other place to buy cigarettes, say, in Leavenworth, they'll possibly, they'll go across the river, and they'll find it, innovative way of getting their tobacco products, as kids have done with beer and liquor since time immemorial. And probably many of us here in this room have done it in our younger years. I didn't, of course, but I probably know a few people that did.
You and your brother.
I had an older brother, that's right. I just think it's something that we should do. When I did bring it up, I said, "I think it's something we should discuss," and the Commission did say, "Let's discuss it," and that's where we are today. I did, I like the idea that illegal to purchase. I don't want to go on a witch hunt on possession to saddle the police chief and his department to roll up 19-year-old kids that happen to have a pack of cigarettes rolled up their sleeve. I guess they don't roll them up their sleeves anymore, but back in our day, you'd roll them up your sleeve. And it just encouraged the retailers not to do it. I suspect, once again, within five years, most retailers won't be selling them to kids under 21 anyway. CVS and Walgreens, for example, they eliminated all tobacco products, and I see that going in more and more major retailers that happening. And I think it's something that we should support, and it's a good idea for the community, for the youth, for everyone. And I, I don't see any harm in it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please.
Okay. And actually, I really am for passing this and also even looking at expanding it to all tobacco products. We're, and, and, and it's, the health benefits, it's, you know, that's going to come, and it's, and even in our own household, my husband and I have had the discussion, we grew up with education and commercials, and actually, they really are much better now, the commercials are, because they really do graphically, you know, give you the effects on that than the cute little commercials that we grew up with. But with all that education, our concern was how still so many young people really still start smoking and using tobacco products and that, and, you know, which is so bad for them. And I don't think you're going to get a lot of people here, even if you smoke in your household, that are going to promote that they want their young people in their household to start smoking, you know, like they did. So I think that's why everybody's on, you know, this side really of the issue on this. My concern where it was is the difference in purchase and possession and the enforcement of that, and I appreciate the comments that, and maybe looking at what other communities have done, because that, and it was, because you had originally brought up, that kind of kept me, it's like, you know, how do we, you know, enforce this and that again, which is, you know, same thing with alcohol, you know, you're always going to get people that are going to skirt it and get away with it on that. But, so, and I was kind of, I guess, learning the lessons from the other communities, so I appreciate the comments there of, you know, making the difference on that. And, you know, didn't want to see young people arrested also for having a pack of cigarettes and that, and burdening our chief with, you know, the enforcement of that. So I, and it is crafting something wisely that, that's heading in the right direction. So it just, you know, for all the reasons that people have brought forth tonight, you know, just the common sense things, I, this is a no-brainer for me. This is something that, I agree that there are very few 18- to 21-year-olds who wish we had more in our community. I just don't see businesses losing 30%. I think what's had the larger effect on that is the increase in the sales tax on that. We're a border community, you know, they're always, we're always fighting with Missouri if it's, you know, gas or alcohol, whatever those purchases are. Right now, we're looking at even food, where you can go and get where the sales tax is cheaper or eliminated on food altogether. I'd like to see the state address that more so. I think that would have a better impact. And, and you do, you've got, we went through this same issue in the past where the fear of it, losing business, also when we looked at it in our restaurants and in the bars and that, and where that would be, and, and that loss of business really just didn't incur, because I think the communities around us are looking at this, and I think that eventually, again, in a very short period of time, we would be addressing this. I think also too, if the state is not, you know, already looking to address this as communities do around, you know, they also see where the direction of people are heading, and they look at, you know, well, since everyone around us and tested the waters, and this has got a lot of momentum and a lot of support behind this, it just makes it easier for the state to pass it too, as we go, as, as we go forward. And sometimes they take their keys from the local community, sometimes we take ours, you know, from the state in their direction. You know, it's, it's a fluid, how you pass, you know, laws in support of your community on that. As far as dictating to adults, we dictate to adults on many things, anywhere from alcohol to gambling and, you know, and there are some things, yeah, they, yeah, on that, so yeah. So I, I looked at it the same, at least, you know, stores will be able to change their stickers, and they'll only have to worry about one age now remembering just, you know, a limited number of birth dates there on that. But, but I really am for passing this, and then even looking at, as we craft the ordinance on this, to other, you know, e-cigarettes and other tobacco-related products.
I would like to make a correction real quick, not that it was changing one of your minds at all, but when I spoke to the people at the store, I did not speak to clerks. I spoke to actual managers and owners, and the 30% and 20% they were talking about was not overall sales. They were just talking about the drop on the percentage of tobacco product sales, not overall store products.
And there was that, yeah, and there really was that same prediction, where restaurants were really afraid of it when we eliminated or bars eliminated it, you know, from there. And notice that all the communities, and it's really become, you know, the state of where it is, that it, it didn't have that initial falloff that people were afraid of. It didn't cause them to close their doors or anything like that. But, but really, that's not a very large segment of our population. I can't see that causing, you know, someone to close their doors.
Nancy.
I struggled with this, and I talked to Mr. Rainey about this before too. You know, what's, what is an adult? And now, can they go over to Missouri at 18 and buy cigarettes, right? No? No?
Depends on where in Missouri they go.
Kansas City, Missouri, no. City of Kansas City, Missouri has passed Tobacco 21.
Okay, so they can't go over there and buy them anyway.
Flat city they go.
They could go across the river.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it's alarming that they sell so many cigarettes. Well, I think it's alarming that they sell so many cigarettes to 18 to 21-year-olds. I mean, that's, that hits me as very alarming. I would, really wanted to hear more from 18 to 21-year-olds to see what they thought. And I have not heard anything negative on this. An 18-year-old, we were 18 one time. Both of my kids, by the way, smoked for a while. And I, they didn't grow up with it. So, I, you know, don't know why on earth they would ever pick it up, but they did when they were in high school. And they have since quit. But it's been very difficult, very difficult. I think it's probably the worst addiction there is. When I was 18, boys were serving in Vietnam, and we were not allowed to vote. We were not allowed to vote at 18. And that was one of the very first political events that I got involved with, was trying to pass so that we could, we could vote on what we want to do. And so, I think that started me on a very active political time in my life. But that being said, if the brains are still developing, and I don't think we can count on the state to pass this, because the state is trying to allow concealed carry in colleges at 18.
No, no. Concealed carry stays at 21.
What are they just talking about? They were talking about 18.
Allow concealed carry, but you have to be at least 21 concealed carry in Kansas. You can open carry at 18. You can open carry at 18, concealed carry you can't.
Oh, I'm sorry, open carry.
And I don't hear the uproar on that.
Anyway, they want to allow open carry on campus from 18. And, you know, I think that is more of a health issue, a bigger health issue than smoking is at this point. I don't know how kids can afford cigarettes. I mean, when I was a kid, they were 25 cents a pack, you know. So, I would like to hear from some of the cities that have passed these, this, and would like to get more information on the fallout and how that was affected before I make a decision on this. But, you know, I, we get, we get sick and tired of the state telling us what we can do. And I have a hard time passing that down and telling people what they can do when the state's telling us what to do, and we don't like it either. But I haven't heard any complaints from the kids. So, you know, I want to hear from the kids. I want to hear, I call them kids. I'm sorry. I guess they're adults at 18, you know. And in Minnesota, you can gamble at 18.
We're talking about cigarettes and tobacco in Leavenworth.
I don't think you can buy cigarettes there, but you can gamble. So, you know, every state and every community has different.
In Germany, you can drink at 16, or even younger. But we're not talking about that.
And if you're 16 and you're pregnant, then you're a liberated adult, you know, you're an adult. So, it's, you know...
So, give them a pack of cigarettes and tell them good luck.
Lot of issues here to think about.
Exactly.
I think the major issue is health, regardless of what it does to tobacco sales or taxes or whatever. I can speak pretty fluently on it. I've been a smoker for over 35 years. And as Connie can attest, I've had some major problems out of that. Now, I am a reformed smoker. I have touched one in about 12 years. And I feel much better. Of course, the damage is already done. My question is, what about the 21-year-old, 22, 23, 24, the 30-year-old? We're still supplying a poison. If this would be an illicit drug, you've got control over it. We don't put it out to the general public. In essence, this is an illicit drug. It's a very addictive drug. But we put it out on open counters where anybody can buy it, where the young kids can see it. I remember the days when you used to buy candy cigarettes. That's a lot of the, was the advertisement for the big cigarette companies. It got young kids smoking. That and TV and movie stars. In my case, it was the Army going through boot camp that got me started. I think if the federal government really wanted to put a stop to this, they say they do. They put warnings on cigarette packages. They increased taxes. The state increases taxes, all in the theme that we're going to make people quit, going to make it too prohibitive for them to purchase it. If they would stop subsidizing the tobacco growers and the cigarette manufacturers, you would put a stop to it, period. They have been for God knows how long. And how much money did they give, which is our tax money? So, even if you don't buy them at the store, you're still paying for them. I think our Kansas legislature should take this matter up and do it clear across the state. I'm going to stop there. We'll save this for another study session. Does anyone else have any other comments?
No, I think that we probably do need, like, she wanted fallout information. I probably, like, when you said the subsidized, you know, of the industry on that, I don't know if that's really true, but I think I would need some information, because I know also that they pay penalties or to the state or whatever in the programs and that. Yeah, yeah. But I mean, I would really like, you know, like I said, you know, we can say that. But I really like some hard data on, you know, really what the impact, if they really do do that, how much they pay in penalties. A lot of them are used for education programs. So, I think we could use some information. I would like to look at how other communities did their, or they're crafting theirs, the purchase versus possession of it, and how they're looking at handling that. You know, so I'd like to kind of further look at this.
Okay. Ms. Mayor, I agree with what you said. And, you know, I'm sure that somebody can do a bunch of research to see how much Liggett and Myers is contributing to political campaigns and to hospitals and everything else. But that's really not the question at hand here. We'll get, we can get that information when we say Eureka, you know, money talks. No kidding. But that's not our situation at hand. Our situation, what we're considering is, do we allow tobacco sales for people under 21? And the wave of, you know, many groups in the Kansas City area and 121 cities in the U.S. thus far, you know, they're denying that. I do remember three, four, five years ago when the state passed no smoking in public establishments, restaurants. There was an uproar. We're going to lose all of our restaurants. They're all going to go to Missouri. They're all going to go to wherever they're going to go. Obviously, that has not happened. And I do agree with not criminalizing it. Be criminalizing it probably to the retailer if they sell it to someone under 21. But having possession, it'd be tough for the police chief and his staff to go out and roll up kids all the time that have a pack of cigarettes. But I do think it would stop those kids, not necessarily 18 and 21-year-olds, but that 15 to 18-year-old. Good points were made that if you wanted some, you've got a buddy, you're a sophomore in high school, you've got a buddy that's a senior that's 18, say, "Go get me a pack of smokes." And of course, he or she will do that. Now, if that's not available, that may stop 10 kids a year from smoking. I don't see any harm in it in stopping this. Once again, we don't allow drinking for children, for people under 21, whether you be in the military or not. Smoking can be the same thing. We don't allow casino gambling in Kansas and, you know, many other things. Concealed carry, a constitutional right. So, I think it's something we should consider. And just, you know, as various other cities have done. One thing I would think that if we did pass it, let's say we pass it at the next meeting, I'm using that as a, just if we would, that we put it out 90 to 120 days, because obviously retailers are going to, you know, when you buy certain things, like you buy beer at the grocery store and the clerk's clearing it up, you know, it pops up right away, is this person over 21? They have to program the computers or cash records to do that. If you implement it the next week, I think there could be a lot of problems. If we did it 90 days, most retailers would be able to get on that without a problem. And I don't think it'd be that huge a loss to the retailers on amount of business. And I think it'd just be very positive for Leavenworth and for the youth of Leavenworth.
Nancy?
Just want to weigh in on the issue of enforcement. Some discussion about that. If you elected to pass this and it was the same as it is now, it's very much like a citation. It's not an arrest where they go to jail. In and of itself, if we happen upon a young person that's under the age of 18 and has tobacco products, it's a citation with a $25 fine. So, if you have concerns that we would be arresting kids for that sort of thing, you know, by themselves, it's only a fine and a citation. It's not a... Now, we've caught kids up to no good doing other things in addition to that, and they've gone to JDC. But in and of itself, as an enforcement issue, it is simply a citation associated with a fine, and the ordinance allows for the parents to come to court too and that sort of thing. So, that's how, in and of itself, the enforcement issue is handled for us, which we would do what we could.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's the, what's the commission want to do? Want another study session on this? Or you feel that we can put it on the agenda?
My personal opinion, I don't know how much more information there is. I mean, we've asked for, this was first discussed back in December. Stories in the paper, and there's been some follow-up for, what, six weeks now, six, seven weeks. And I've heard from quite a few constituents, some that are, I'd say, the majority, more than 50% that I've talked to are definitely favorite. I've had people speak against it. They think, oh, you know, you're taking the rights away from people. I think most of them were surprised when I told them, "You can't, concealed carry, you've got to be 21." "No, no, you don't." And I said, "Check the law." So, they're surprised at that. So, and, you know, Mr. Rainey said, what'd you say, 90 to 1?
On social media, it was about 90 people, 90 to 1, 90% of them were against raising it, yes.
Okay. Well, I got to count here. It was 34 against it and 14 saying...
Is that counting the one? And I watch Leavenworth, because there's two different social media pages. I added together.
And it was about, I'd say more in favor on your social media page were against raising it than were for it. But it was by no means 90 to 10. So, I think you will get people all over the board on it. The main argument I hear is constitutional right, or a right, we're eroding the rights of citizens. And I don't see it as that. I see it as a public health issue. And I don't see it as detrimental to business, a very small, small impact. I'm not concerned with that part of it, because I don't think it'll be that huge.
Charlie?
I'd like to see it go back on to the study session before we take it up. We've already spoke about more information needed, you know, on the tobacco companies. You know, Commissioner Bowden mentioned, want to hear a little more from, I call them adults, 18, 19, and 20. Some call them youth and kids. I call them adults. You want to hear more from their input on it. The stores I spoke to, they didn't represent themselves. They gave me information after hearing that this may go further. I'm sure that they're going to want to come in and give their own little statistics on the economic impact it will have on their stores. So, I would prefer, if we're going to take this further, that it goes to another study session.
Please.
Personally, I could go, I could go forward with it the same as Commissioner Prisinger could. But I will concede though, to get, you know, more info, I don't think you're going to get a lot of 18 to 20s. I'd be really surprised. They usually don't get engaged very, but, you know, but we could get surprised this time. But I'm willing to look at, what I would like to see is the legislation and the ordinance that's been crafted on this already in some communities as part of our information. And if it, you know, a couple of commissioners, if they need more information, yeah, I think we could, you know, do another study session and get more information. And it also, like I said, gives feedback for the public. It never hurts to, you know, slow something down and get, you know, and get, you know, more feedback from the public, because as much as we're engaged in a lot of this, you know, not everybody is in, you know, in our world on that. So, I have no problem in putting this on another study session.
Nancy?
Study session's okay with me, or as long as we, or if you wanted to put it on the agenda, as long as we get the information before then. But I think, you know, like what Lisa said, I'd go along with that.
How soon can we get it on the agenda?
Well, from what I'm hearing is, I need to talk to some other cities a little bit and get a little bit of testimony from them. I also need to probably present you with some model ordinances. I'll pull those together. I think, I think there's a consensus just to focus on the purchase rather than the possession, which is fine. But there are some nuances as far as language about alternative nicotine products. So, I'll give some sample language on that. So, not too long. Let me look at the schedule. I don't think I can get it by the next study session, but maybe the first study session in March.
I'm in agreement, bringing on a study session too, to see all these things. I think that's a good point. I don't know that we'll get a lot. I know Commissioner Rainey, who was advertising, he advertised a few different dates, but he did have it in, on tonight. And I haven't seen anybody come to speak against it. And people do know about it. And as we know, it's, unless we're talking about pit bulls, we're not going to fill this room too much. But, you know, well, I'm sure we can get some people in to speak pro and con on it. And obviously, people speak pro on it tonight. And I think we should look at model ordinances, that we don't craft, if we do go with this, we don't craft something that is, you know, not thought out. And because there's probably a lot to be learned from cities that have implemented it, that maybe they did something incorrectly and they had to go back and change it. Or the commission's decision is that it doesn't go. We need to have that information. A study session is probably prudent, another one.
Okay. Well, let's tend to please set it for the first part of March. I'd like to thank everybody that participated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks, for coming out.
Number two is the annual report for stormwater.
Give Mike a second to get up here.
He said he could make both these reports at five, so I couldn't do my script.
I don't know if you think they're different.
She's in the working area. Lot's going on. If you don't like the electronic version of things, I got the paper here. We'll talk about it after the meeting. All righty. The, there are two items are both, the next two items are both related to stormwater. And they're similar, and there's a lot of overlap. But there are some important distinctions between them. The first one I'd like to talk about is the stormwater annual report, which is a requirement with our permit we have with KDAHE through their friends at the EPA, that we summarize our activities that we as the city of Leavenworth have done over the previous year to address stormwater quality in the city of Leavenworth. The second agenda item is approval of the, they call the Stormwater Management Plan, which is where we state, "This is what we're going to try to do for the upcoming period of years." And there's a lot of overlap. And I'll try to go through the annual report first, I think. And then anything we don't need to repeat, I'll try not to. The, there's a lot of material that's gone into this. This is a report that the city has submitted basically every year since 2004, when the initial stormwater permits came out, where the city was found to be a qualified phase II city, which is generically what they would call a small, small urban area in the state of Kansas, or like 30 of these around the state. The report has grown in complexity as to what we are required to report, because the permits have been revised. I think this is this, it was original permit, and this is the second new permit, if you will, that we're on. We keep adding things, state being the state. Based on the, it was, I've mentioned before, this report is generally prepared by staff, reviewed with the city manager, and if he believes it's been okay in the past, it's just been sent in. Our discussions this year with KDAHE and with EPA have basically suggested that it would be appropriate that this report be talked about in a public forum, such as the study session this evening, for comments from the commissioners or the public at the meeting, or to the commissioners or any other method. And that is one of the reasons that we are here. The report is focused around the six minimum control measures, and they're up on the overhead. And you'll see this throughout a lot of the discussions. And when EPA created the rules, these were the areas that they determined that the cities needed to focus on. that the cities needed to focus on and address. To avoid reading them, but it's related to outreach and education. What do you do if you see something that doesn't look right? How do you control particularly erosion from construction sites? And need to look at yourself and see, are you doing a good job as a government entity to avoid polluting waters of the United States? Which has been further interpreted by the court that it's not just the traditional interpretation of the waters of the United States. It's any water that might flow into the water of the United States, which is pretty much any water on the street in the City of Lovemore. So it's a fairly simple layout, and it gets somewhat more complex after that. The report, and I have, you know, I have the whole policy report here if you want to look at it. And I've got pictures and some other things here. But the things that I would ask the commission to look at in the report is there's an executive summary that talks about an overall sense of what we've accomplished. This is not the executive summary here, but there is one at the front end of the report. And then there's these weird-looking tables that are sections C through D. These are broken into six sessions, which magically correspond with these six minimum control measures. And back in 2003, when we first prepared this type of a report, and the copy of that written, 2003 document is in your policy report, we said we would do certain things, and we have continued to try to do them. And in this case, the picture that's on the screen is related public outreach or public education and outreach. It's things like the Stormwater Master Plan, which is a water-quantity-based document that we've completed many years ago. We have a copy of that at the public library. It's still there, and I think they've actually had maybe six, seven people like check it out and look at it the last 10 years. So it does happen. There's a statement that we've made about educational materials. We don't really have that, but we do try to talk about stormwater in some of our publications and the newsletter that goes out. And the Parks Department has the Pick Up Your Dog Bean Plan and some things like that. So we try to go through each of these sections and comment on them. In general, the comments in red are revisions from the comments from the previous year. That's not entirely throughout the document, but they were the ones that I said, ew, that's a change, I really need to highlight that. But it's pretty straightforward stuff. The first column is, this is what they're trying to focus on. Here's what we said we're going to try to do. And then the third column is kind of what we did. Remember, last year, we were talking about this Stormwater Design Manual and some guidelines and creating land disturbance permits. That's gone a big way toward working on this report. And you can go through the figures. There's item two, Public Involvement Participation. And we've always held that the city commission is available to the public pretty much 24/7. We talk about stormwater issues. We have several documented meetings where people have come in and talked to the commission about their concerns about stormwater. Truth is, most everyone's concerns are water quantity, but they are, in fact, stormwater concerns. And we will generally incorporate copies of the minutes or the newspaper articles in the report. This is my draft of the report. This is appendices, but we're not in the material that you received for the meeting. And we talk about stenciling, and we talk about trash removal, and we talk about the arborway trees. Talked about the whole thing we do with the rain gauges and the stream monitors. The mapping, which we're very proud of. I think we've got a mapping that's second to none. And how that is complete, although even though it's complete, we still are running through verifying diameters and depths and things. We know where everything is at this point. So what I would like to say, I think it's a good document. Oh, I left off section F, which I don't have here. I can pull it up if you really wanted to. But it's a little more, you know, where you're supposed to think about what you've learned over the previous year. And there's some observations about what works and what doesn't work. Observations like our contractors have done very well with this whole erosion control thing. They don't follow up with it very well. Our grease trap program, where we communicate with people with grease traps, very responsive, everybody, large and small. They're welcome as their establishments. They show us what they've got done. But if you call them up randomly, which we do with our silk contractors and our grease trap people, say, kindly send me a copy of your inspection records for the last six months. If they respond at all, it's typically a checklist that looks like the same guy wrote it with the same PIN about 15 seconds before he scanned it and emailed it to you. So it's... I think they take it seriously, but I don't think they take the reporting part seriously. So we're going to need to work on that. So we identify some goals in that section F of the report as well. So I can talk about this for quite a while longer, but my goal this evening is if the commission has questions or concerns about the direction of the report, kindly let me know, or let the city manager know, and we'll try to address those. I expect to have the final draft reviewed or prepared for the submission to the city commission, either as a study session or as a downloadable document. Because this thing basically needs to be in the possession of my friends at KDAHE on like the 26th of February. And I think we're well on track to do that. So that's the first policy report.
Any questions?
Everything, I've reviewed everything that you have given me here. I don't have any questions.
No, it's just, kind of just like some of the things that, where you need to just fill in the blanks with, like how many permits or things like that. You know, that's what you're looking at, final information.
We'll take care of that.
And some of the information, I noticed you're putting in 2014 information, but since this is January 2015 through December 31st, 2015, like one example was, how many trees did we plant in 2015? You know, that type of thing. I mean, is it...
Those types of inconsistencies are very awful. If you see something, let me know, because I've read this enough. I've missed that. But the goal would be to identify 2015 trees planted on the legacy tree.
Okay, and then in the draft, you've got where it's, for the stormwater drainage, it's, you've got like either less than an acre or more than an acre for development, and they need to have a plan. In the draft, it's less than an acre?
Yeah, I think it's technically the state, it's more than an acre.
Is it more than... Because then, okay, because then in the plan, it's more than an acre. Yeah, because I was just like...
We need to get that...
So there's just, yeah, just, those are just some of the fine things I saw in there. And just compare, reading both of them and that, but...
And I appreciate those types of comments. Everything, if there's a word spelled wrong that I didn't have circled in there...
That I wouldn't know.
Please let me know.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes the word is spelled correctly, it's just the wrong word, and it doesn't read very well.
I could not proofread my old stuff either, but yeah. But no, I, yeah, it's just... Actually, what it went through, too, is, you know, we've done this over the years, but it's the first time that we've had a chance to review it and how just much encompasses it. You know, I mean, the LEAF program, you know, we were, how we debated that and stuff. And well, now it's become, and, you know, we shouldn't do it because of the cost, and now it's an integral part of our stormwater management program. I was like, okay, that's one reason to just justify that. You know, but the planting of trees and that, yeah. It's just, you know, what you, you know, it's just amazing how many parts there are to it.
And I think ultimately, it serves a worthy purpose to bring this to the commission for a review like this. Because as I write this, I said, there's a lot of things in here that you don't think are related, and you forget where they originated from.
There's a lot.
We've done this, we've done that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's more than just your sewer line backing up.
Want to do the stormwater management?
Yes, sure. As we were talking in the last policy report, that we have six minimum control measures. The Stormwater Management Plan is a document that the city had agreed upon in 2003 on what we could do to address stormwater quality within the City of Lovemore. And that document is included in the policy report. And KDAHE and EPA suggested that it was timed to be upgraded. They did not tell us it needed to be upgraded. They specifically said that, when I asked them, they being KDAHE, are there any documents that you expect from the City of Lovemore that you do not have? And they said there were none. And that was this year. So I've also been told unofficially that it'd probably be good to do this, because they're going to be looking at everybody's plans, and it's necessary. So what I've done is taken kind of the emphasis on the annual report, the previous policy report we just looked at, and tried to think like what we ought to look at, since we are where we are in this listing of things that we should be measuring. The, there's a whole narrative that goes with this, but all the communities in the greater Kansas City area that do these reports are very, very small. There's not a lot of deep thinking that goes into them. So I have not prepared that narrative at this point, but it will be basically not quite as lengthy as what I did on the annual report. But it's going to say that stormwater quality is important to us, and here's our six minimum control measures. And what we are already doing, we'll continue to do to make life more meaningful related to water quality. And for instance, I've, coincidentally, there's items 1 through 6, Public Education and Outreach. I've restructured this to, their big emphasis is on something that you can measure. They want to report a number, if at all possible, on things that you did. Well, we have a webpage that relates to our stormwater information. I think they can count that sort of stuff. How many people looked at that particular webpage over the course of here? And so I've identified that as a measure of number of visitors. And in our case, I've just written Lovemore through everything, which is typical. Some larger organizations will say that this is a responsibility of the Stormwater Department, and this is the city engineer's office, this is the public information officers. We're not that big, so I just wrote Lovemore. And then I also identified that we would do this for the permitting years, 1 through 5. I believe in every single case, they allowed in, where you could phase in a program. If you did something, if you studied something in the first two years, you could phase in the recommendations for the second three years. I didn't find anything that really depended south to that. And even though we're completing the second year of a five-year permit, I just left it at permit years 1 through 5, because it's really material. If it's years 3 through 5, or 1, 2, and 3, counting forward, because they're going to issue new permits in probably three or four years, anyway. So these are things that I would ask that the commission then take a look at and see if these are things that you're comfortable that we're pursuing, trying to track. Almost all of this, we already track or do something with in some manner, shape, or form. We have, for instance, we have a webpage, and we can count visitors. We just have never written that down as a performance measure. Track how many stories we put in our mailings. We already distribute the hand-to-hand out with the trash bags, and we're going to continue to do that. We'll try to, well, in this meeting, for instance, we'll broadcast a community forum in which water quality discussions take place. This counts as a checkmark in that box. And goes on through there. I've also formalized that we should come, much like we do at the Snow Plant, once a year, we should talk about the annual report and review the annual, and review the capital improvement plans with stormwater. And maybe actually add a line that says, we'll look at the Stormwater Management Plan every two years, but, you know, we just leave it off there. We can put it in there if that's important to you. Try to do something with the Adopt a Stream Program. How do we quantify the City of Lovey Cleanup Program, which has been a huge success? Talked with our PIO Melissa about what's it take to do these online surveys, either through our survey Nike thing or something on Facebook. She says it's real easy to do. And I said, great, well, I'm not going to volunteer to do a lot of them. So I volunteered to do at least one each year on something to do with stormwater. And for an online environment, the EPA is really, really, really big on online stuff. And formally encourage groups that want to go stencil inlets with the little fish emblem on them that says, don't dump your oil in here, or some other creek cleanup. We have Boy Scouts and that sort of thing that come through. This one is kind of a lot of annoying words. Illicit distortion detection and elimination. This is just an interesting way to say, find out if people are dumping something in the streams they're not supposed to, and when you do find it, deal with it. And basically, we have a fairly good system of reporting. We want to formalize that perhaps a little bit. If they do see something that bothers them in a creek or a stream, it is entirely expected that they call City Hall and let us know about the problem. And we can keep track of the number of reports.
Do you have any problems with that anymore? People dump their oil or stuff in the creeks. I know 50 years ago, it was probably fairly common, but now, is it really...
The oil, really, that's a problem that has, seems to have gone away. I think everyone's aware that that's... It's not even a good idea to dump it on the gravel. You know, if you've got a gravel parking thing in front of your house, that's even bad, because your oil has all kinds of heavy metals and other stuff in it. The oil might do something good for you, but the heavy metals wash off into the stream and with the water, so it's just not what you should do with your used oil. And then it's not been a problem. We do have odd things happen. People, we have a house out on the west edge of town, it's been a few years now. An older couple lived in it for generations. They moved on, and a young family with a whole lot of kids moved in and found out they didn't have a sewer. They didn't have a septic tank. All they had was a sewer line that went straight to the creek. Oh, my. Well, that was brought to our attention, they self-reported it, that, where's my sewer line? Well, but that's, you know, that's the kind of thing that people should feel comfortable calling about. In that case, I think it cost them a fair amount of money, but we cut them some break on the buy-in fee. But they had to build a sewer line. It had never had one. It had never been connected to the sewer in the history of Lovemore.
That's a...
Something you want to think about when you buy a house, isn't it?
Yeah, a little chat with the realtor there. Just assumed you were connected to city services, yeah.
Outfalls is a generic term they use for the end of a pipe. Well, I would say we have, you know, things that I would consider worth looking at, you know, maybe 20 or 30. Well, the technical definition by our EPA is something on, or like 3 or 4 or 500. The end of every pipe is considered an outfall. So we're going to try to get our guys to, if they ever, whenever they look at a pipe, they need to log it in, because at some point, they're going to look at the end of it. So that will be an out. If they've been trying to say, that doesn't look right, then that qualifies as an outfall inspection. We track, we repack the number of customers at the compost site, the train brush site. We collect hazardous weights. We know how many pounds that was. So there's a lot of things in here that we already do. We already inspect sewer and storm sewer. I couldn't bring myself to write down a number of feet or anything, because it's too squishy. You don't know. You don't know. I've got the commercial grease trap program in here, which I'm basically going to try to improve compliance for the inspection. The big one that we dealt with earlier this year is the land disturbance permits, runoff site, the construction runoff. That has been a very successful program. It's also labor-intensive. It is a lot of paperwork. We're working hard with our staff to find efficient ways to keep our records, to make the contractors' lives easier. The contractors really know what they're supposed to do, but given the opportunity to not have to do it, they'll take advantage of it. So we've got to keep reminding them that when it rains, they got to go look at their erosion control. And even if they have to do nothing, because it's working perfectly fine, they need to write down that they looked at it. And then we're supposed to get copies of those records when we request them. And we do a random inspection of that sort of thing, and don't always get them. We're working through that. Lots of training things. Try to have an annual, I put in here, have an annual meeting with our contractors to discuss land disturbance permits. And sometime this time of year, say, okay, we're, another year's coming up. What do you want to talk about? Give them the opportunity to come in and meet with us. Similarly, post-construction runoff control is, okay, the houses are... Similarly, post-construction runoff control is, okay, the houses are all built, and they've all got silt fence, and they all got gutter buddies, and the grass is starting to grow. What do we do now? Well, someone's got to sign off that they're complete when they get seventy percent of the vegetation growth back. That's what we do with this land disturbance permit. What do they do with detention basins? They're supposed to be typically their homeowners' association, and the homeowners' associations are not a bit interested in taking care of them typically, so we're working that. We've talked about it for several years. We've talked to a few owners. Uh, this year, I've got both engineering techs. It's one of their things to do is we're gonna be contacting all the owners and letting them know that we care, and we're gonna come up with progression into a plan that, if it's nothing else other than mowing the grass once in a while, great, but I'm also going to be measuring how they perform when it rains. There are some we've never seen watering. There are some that we've never seen water in, but I can prove that they actually do get water in because I put my little monitoring device in it. When it rains hard, the creek comes up or the basin comes up and it goes down. Often, it's like less than an hour. We're gonna try to evaluate those if that's effective, if it's working the way it's supposed to.
Are detention ponds like mostly homeowners' association-type communities?
Yeah. They're typically the large ones, like at Walmart or Home Depot, of course, owned by them, but other ones like out in Shenandoah or Wellington, those are technically owned by the homeowners' associations. If you're in Shenandoah or Wellington, you say, "Well, that's great." Uh, or the woods on Wellington subdivision say, "That's great. We got two detention ponds, but they don't have a homeowners' association, so it's not a problem." Well, that's not quite the case. Uh, previous city attorneys have advised that if there is no homeowners' association, then just drop the word "association" off and go ahead and let them know. And we haven't done that yet, but we'll be talking with Tom Dawson about that. But almost all of them, the city owns a few, uh, almost, and there's a few of them that are owned by individuals, but almost all, the formerly destructive detention basins have an identifiable owner. And we're supposed to go inspect those and document that we inspected them. And then the number six is municipal pollution prevention. This is a good housekeeping thing. Uh, I've generated a new one, and if you, uh, in the report I talked about, we looked at our salt storage operations this year, and, uh, there were some things that we found we could do to improve water quality. We built a berm around where we take it out off of Chestnut Second, or when it melts, when we call it out of downtown. The water could just melt and run straight to the stream. Uh, that's...you can do better than that. They want you to slow it down, so we just built the berm around, and so when the snow melts, it sits there a while, and the sediments and the salt maybe don't run off so much. That's just the water part. We looked at the service center and said, "Nah, there's some erosion we need to take care of." So, I'm proposing that we would have, you know, look at three facilities. I tried to not get real specific. What's a facility? Could be a park. Could be a parking lot. Could be a community center. Could be something else. But we wanna look at...look at them, uh, and write a little bit of a report on what we saw, and I'm proposing three facilities per year without getting too much detail of what the facility is. Keep sweeping streets, keep cleaning the inlets, keep picking up leaves. Thank you, Commissioner. So, that's the, uh, that's the six minimum control measures. I included a copy of Goldaitha's, um, stormwater management plans. They had a pretty good narrative. About half of theirs was water quantity. I'm not using any of that, but they're kind of outlined for how they talked about their minimum control measures. I'll write a page or two or three about that, and I kind of structured some of these ideas with what they had, but it's certainly not a copy of their plan. So, that's the difference between the two. Are there any questions?
I just have a question about leaf pickup. How do you determine the dates?
Uh, it's like the first Monday in November.
It's too early.
Sometimes. And then we wait.
Because if they came through, there was no leaves.
Uh, they were...
They were there.
They were told to be prepared to go the first Monday in November and go. If you're through the entire town in two and a half hours, that's great, but we'll wait...
I think they were.
We'll wait till next Monday and do it again, but I did not want them to make that decision on their own that there's no leaves, so we're not going to go out. I said, "You're going to go out."
Actually, I...in my...
They never did pick up.
I have...I have like the phases. We have the really early ones, and then we have the late ones when it's actually too late, which is very frustrating because by then it's like cold weather, and you're not even motivated to get out there, but it just depends on the trees, yeah. So, it does kinda seem too early.
I was just curious about that.
That's the...they're ready to go on that first Monday in November.
Okay.
We did have it October fifteenth. Remember that?
Yeah.
And then we moved it to November because the trees do start dropping at the end of October. Uh, and they do usually make a couple passes. They'll go from north to south and south to north, and then if you get a snow, then all bets are off because then they sit there till February because there's just...you can't get them anymore.
And all the other options for leaf disposal do remain for the benefit of the viewing public. You can put them out with your regular trash. There's no penalty or limit on that. You can take them at no cost to the city's brush disposal site at eighteen hundred South Second Street. Uh, you can wait for the city to come by and pick them up, or you can contract with a lawn service of your choice to do that. So, they're...we're not restricting any other options. We're just providing the service to half the community every...
Yeah.
Every year.
Okay.
And likewise, if you have questions or comments, or if this is, uh, too much or too little, uh, if you could get in touch with the city manager or myself by the end of next week, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
You also have the pavement management.
Uh, yes, sir. Pavement management for two thousand and sixteen. Uh, I have, uh, hardworking staff here as well. I have Mike Cooper, who's the director of Public Works, and Tammy Snyder, who is our new project manager. Uh, she was involved in some pavement management, uh, street ratings and thought processes in her previous job, so we threw her into the deep end headfirst on this and tried to put this together as best...as best we could. I have a number of pictures. Uh, maybe the listing of streets isn't the most useful one. Might be this one here. And that's, of course, is hard to see, but we'll zoom it up just a little bit. This is, uh, in two thousand and sixteen, the city commission has significantly increased the funding available for our pavement management plan, and, uh, that's greatly appreciated. We're excited about what we're going to do with the money. But in our effort to, uh, get this project out early, meets, uh, meets the needs of the community as well as expectations of city managers and myself. Uh, we've tried to fast-track some of the thought processes on that, and we were able to, uh, we've taken back over the street rating ourselves. We don't contract that out for the last...the last three years. Uh, we have had such a limited budget to actually do much of anything the last three years that we haven't spent a lot of time rating streets, and we realized that we better do something in order to have something, uh, have a rational presentation to the commission this evening. So, uh, Tammy worked with, uh, David Griffith, G I S department, to put together a map based on pavement ratings that came out of the, uh, database that we have and inspected all of the streets, uh, that, uh, kind of fit the profile. We think they're ones that we could cost effectively, uh, spend some money on. We looked at kind of two options. We ended up with the slurry seal option. We ended up with, uh, kind of the mill overlay or pave option. And I think we've got a good list of streets that I had up there. It's the same as in the policy report. I won't say it's perfect, but it's, uh, it's much more than we've been able to do the last three or four years, and I think you'll be able to see a difference. One of the things that we'd like this evening is for the commission to look at the listing of streets and to tell us that they believe that's an appropriate direction to proceed so we can bring the design contract back to the commission with the tennis. We can get these things designed and out the street. We expect to actually be two contracts, one a slurry seal contract and one a, uh, kind of a mill and overlay contract, and possibly a separate one for the work on Twentieth Street. And we've broken out the one point seven million dollar budget in the middle of the policy report page there. Uh, it says, first line is five hundred thousand dollars for continued overlay of Twentieth Street. And we just realized this morning, we were looking at the map, that this map really isn't quite right. That's what's shown is kind of the dark section here is, uh, that's about half. It's really gonna be about twice that long. And our belief is that with the work we're proposing this year on Twentieth Street, which is more of that joint repair, uh, curb repair if we need to, that sort of thing, we could move this year and three more years, and we'll be out of Twentieth Street. I can move this up here a little bit, so if you could...
So, Mike, roughly what...give me a landmark on how far up we're gonna go.
Oh, uh, at least Nineteenth Street Terrace, I think.
Down the hill right before Viola's.
Right, then before you...before you get down to, uh, get down to Viola's, there's a T-intersection that goes off to the east. It's Nineteenth Street Terrace. I think we could get at least there. That's...so that the map...the map is...is not reflected in. Then the next year, you know, you look at maybe Tonkinoxi Road, and then the next, about halfway down to Eisenhower.
What exactly does reconstruct mean?
On the reconstructing, on the list of streets, is basically we're gonna come bring the streets up. There's nothing there to save. We're gonna re-comback them, bring in some gravel and some asphalt, and basically just repave them. It's most...single most expensive thing you can do, except working concrete streets, I think.
Do curb and gutter, too, as well?
No.
No.
Most of these reconstruct streets are just...uh, it's the asphalt that's really bad. Most of them don't have...
They are. One of them's my street, and it is really bad.
Oh, we didn't know that when we do this up.
I was gonna be trapped in my house because of the construction. Okay, just curious.
So, it should go fairly quickly and shouldn't be trapped out of your house for more than a couple of weeks or something. Uh, but we've broken it up with a preliminary ballpark is five hundred thousand dollars on Twentieth Street, about two hundred fifty thousand for Collector and Arturio Street. Uh, that's not identified on here. Uh, we kind of looked at, uh, these would probably...we're looking for, bank for the buck here with probably some patching in the mill and overlay. I don't have a specific location. We wanted to work with our engineer on what we thought was an efficient way to spend the money, but, uh, Spruce Street is probably not the best one because we just finished, uh, well, Clinks, but I think the...the rest of these are all streets that could bear investigating for about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which was a fairly arbitrary number, but we wanted to make it meaningful to address Collector and Arturio Streets, and then the balance, uh, the big money is seven hundred fifty thousand to nine hundred thousand on residential streets.
On that, you know, like Tonkinoxi Drive and La Compton, those are pretty long streets. Are you looking at the entire street on those or just sections?
We don't know. We gotta look at...
You don't know? Okay.
What we need to do, uh, it's...it's a whole lot nicer if you can kind of do some of those all at once instead of miserably two year...two years in a row, rather than just one year.
Yeah, La Compton looks like a tough, tough one, too.
And La Compton, as you go up the hill, that whole hillside's as...it's alive. It's moved. It's been moving for...
Yeah, it's like...it's a repetitive project that's gonna just be forever because, yeah.
So, there's not a lot of sense in trying to make it perfect. You just kind of find out where it's sliding and try to patch it back together.
Y'all been doing a good job on that, too.
Yeah.
Because holes show up one night, and the next day, you've got to patch, so...
Thank you.
Where, uh, what's the master plan on Forten from Broadway to Tenth Avenue or Broadway to just west of the service center?
We have...
That's a big one, I know.
Yep. That is a study this year for preliminary line and grade to do coordinated utility work at leave design in the next year and construct the following year.
If you had to ballpark that right now, what's your guess on that cost for that from Broadway West to, uh, would be drawing?
Terrible.
Just a lot, besides something...besides a lot, just...
More money than we had.
Half a million?
Yeah.
Three quarters, four million and a half?
We're probably looking at a couple of million.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be a...it will come out of this fund.
No, because it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
At least a two-year, maybe three-year phase project to get that done.
Okay.
It may be as much as five, and then you can start in storm drains.
Okay. I know it's big.
Good project.
Thank you.
And that's correct. It is a C I P project, most likely sales tax. Kind of like sales tax. This is kind of our maintenance or, you know, smaller maintenance type of projects. A couple of other interesting things that have kind of come out that we've been exploring is, most everyone's familiar with Google Earth, where you've got the little car, and if you wanna go see where you used to live, you know, thirty years ago, you can drive down that street in a completely different part of the country through the technology and look around. Well, people have taken that technology, and they've added a whole lot of sensors and computer to that type of video technology and doing essentially robotic pavement rating, uh, with the kind of that Google car technology along with the pavement management technology. Uh, it's been kind of explored in some of the cities in the greater Kansas City area, and it's extremely affordable, and it gives you a very good unbiased representation of what's out there. And kind of our initial indications are that it would make a whole lot of good sense to have, and very affordable to have the entire city scanned with this technology or the vast majority of the city scanned with this technology about every other year for slightly more than we had been paying to scan like a third or fourth city every year. Uh, we don't know for sure. We'll be following that. We've tried to see if we could get them up here to do something for us this year, but they're booked solid as their technology's developing, but they have said they'll be in the Kansas City area this fall, so we're gonna be pursuing that as a possibility to get good pavement ratings so you have better decisions to make. And Tammy did a really good job of driving the streets and making notes and got right after it. That was...it was a very good thing. If they're...generally speaking, where we go from here is if they're...if this general approach to this and the streets are okay, I have to report that the list of streets probably is more money than we have, but, say, we don't know, uh... Hang it on here. But, uh, I think we can make it, uh, I think we can make this get a lot closer. If you look at the little spreadsheet with a one point seven five million dollar budget, by the time you do all the things that we kind of said we'd do for over our budget somewhat by three hundred forty-five thousand dollars, however, the cost of the slurry seal, assume a lot of repairs went with that. We don't know the actual extent of the repairs. That's why we get the engineers in here. They'll go out and they'll measure them and draw them on the plans and detail them out. So, between that and some other savings, we think that we'll save, we think we'll be able to reduce that overage. But there's a chance that there will be, uh, some of these streets that we've shown here may need to fall off into an older and a bit situation if we don't think we can include them in the base bid. Normally, when we've done that, we put them on the top of the list for the following year, so at least there's some continuity. But that is our initial estimates, and it's basically tempered, uh, you know, fifty percent over program, which is kind of typical at this level with detail.
I have a question. When you...like, if you started, is this the worst, you know, or...
I don't...I believe that's...
Is there any kind of order of condition here?
I don't...no.
No? Okay, I was wondering, yeah, because it's...I have to go...I know, I was just wishing now that every time I had a street, you know, but there were so many, the list that was here is like, I wish I would've kept that now.
In the process of identifying these streets, we did outreach to the police department and the fire department and the other departments.
Yeah.
What street just drives you crazy because it's so bad?
Yeah.
Please let us know so we can try to evaluate as we prepare this list, and we got a fair amount of response from that, and I appreciate that.
Based on three-year-old ratings that we used to come up with the list?
Come on up.
A lot of them, you can't talk back there. Based on three-year-old ratings that we used to come up with the list...
Based on the three-year-old ratings that we used to come up with the list, these were the worst streets from three years ago, so.
Okay, that's why I was.
They haven't improved any.
Over the last 30 years.
No, mine hasn't improved.
I think it's also important to note that we've kind of tried to do this with a plan. Rebuilding streets is kind of like a last resort. It's very expensive per square foot or lane mile, or however you want to look at. But you also have to recognize that those are streets that they do get used and they do get noticed. So we always try to find something that we can do to make it better, even for the ones that are just completely total. You can repair every street all the time, but these were streets that we saw that, particularly 21st Street, Pussoni South, gets a lot of traffic.
There's a lot of water that runs through there, too, from behind the park, behind Eagles there.
And that, the ballfields and all that sort of thing. And then the other streets are.
It's deteriorating.
There's people that live on them, they've suffered, and a lot of people do suffer. But the streets, they're at the point now, if we don't fix them out, they're going to just completely fall apart in our maintenance costs, so we can go higher on them. So we tried to look at everything. Any questions?
No, there's just, you know, so much.
Thank you, Mike. You're welcome.
Okay. We can stay here for the next one if you like. They do need to make a motion.
Yes. Design contract for 22nd Street, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move that we go into special meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Winkley.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Mike?
Yes, sir. I don't have an overhead for this, but I can get one if you like. But this is related to 22nd Street between Viola's and Limit. This is where the street was washed away in the storm July 6th of last year. Currently, there is traffic that runs only one lane of traffic, and we have it set up for one way. It creates neighborhood frustration for residents, it creates school parent frustration, it creates school frustration, the place where everybody's frustrated. So we were wanting to get this done, and we have one of those windows to get it done by. Our goal is to design this project, to make it one lane each way, have wider shoulders for safer pedestrian bicycle space, improve the ditch so it isn't just a constant erosion disaster, and get it designed right now, out the bed ASAP and open before school starts. It's like the number one hot annoying thing that we're working on right now. And Mike and Tammy have been working on this. We've sought input from several engineering firms. We explained what our expectations were. Our first firm we talked to said they would be really happy to do that, but they did not think they could meet our expectations for time. And they moved on, so we moved on to the second firm to negotiate a plan. They've got, they're more heavily staffed than the first firm we talked.
So you're asking for the design contract approval of 24-5?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
No. Definitely need to do this before school.
I move that we approve the contract with CFS in the amount not to exceed $24,500.
Second.
A motion in a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Winkley.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. We do have a need for an executive session for attorney-client privilege, about 20 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, move that we go into executive session, purpose consultation with attorney for privileged information, attorney-client privilege.
Second.
For 20 minutes. I'm sorry, return to this room by 8:55, at 8:55 at that clock. There's a couple of minutes to.
Begin voting with Commissioner Winkley.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in the executive.
No, because we're in the executive.
Okay, no action taken in the executive session. Do we need a motion to close the executive?
So move.
Second.
Not to close, just to adjourn the meeting. Okay, I move adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn. Begin voting with Commissioner Winkley.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.